Welcome to the February 27, 2024 City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Blom is currently absent.
All right, I know he's on his way. So we'll start with clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Climan?
I have none.
Councilmember Avery?
I have none.
Councilmember Wagon?
None.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Mayor Pro Tim Stapleton?
None.
And I have none, so we will move right into the reason why all of you are here. So Shirley Peppas, come on up. So we're really excited. So this year, most of you probably know this, but one of the things that we're trying to do is recognize people who are going above and beyond and really doing some amazing things inside of our community. And I've invited my fellow councilmembers to submit thoughts and names and groups. You actually were nominated by two of our councilmembers, Shirley. Brad got there first. So Brad Avery and then Councilmember Stapleton, Mayor Pro Tim Stapleton, and I know frankly a number of other people up here, very excited to have you here. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the proclamation, and then you're welcome to say whatever you would like, and then we're definitely going to take a picture together. So either mic would be fine, but you can stay right there, and I'm just going to read the proclamation first. Whereas Shirley Peppas has brought joy to countless children and children at heart with her house on Balboa Island known as the Penguin House, home that's been named a Newport Beach Christmas Boat Parade Ring of Lights competition winner. And whereas, starting in 1989, Shirley served as a member of the Board of Directors for the Orange Wood Foundation, which is a program that assists foster children and provides community youth services. And whereas, with a small group, Shirley helped start the Orange Wood Foundation's Advanced Studies Program, which has provided seven figures worth of scholarships to foster youth, helping over 75 students complete advanced degrees or certificate programs, earning masters and doctorates in a variety of fields. And whereas Shirley has served on the Balboa Island Museum and Historical Society Board of Directors for over a decade, which included a five-year stint as president, starting in 2015. And whereas Shirley remains committed to the educational and historic preservation efforts of the museum and regularly helps raise significant donations toward the cause. Now, therefore, I, Will O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Shirley Peppas as a helper of education, philanthropy, community, and historic preservation. So that's the mic right there.
Do it here?
Yep.
From my back? Well, first of all, thank you, and thank you to Joe and Brad especially. It was a very nice call to get from Mayor Will. So that was, that was great. So as you know, and you said it when you called me, that I know what you're going to talk about. And so, yes, of course, I would talk about the museum because we founded that in, you know, it's been 10 years and five years in the new place. And we've seen like 300,000 people. And so we consider that quite the success. Obviously, the biggest challenges of that are always the same, fundraising. Thank you to the Arduous family for being very generous to get us in the spot and then to keep us there, keep the doors open. So the passion for the museum is really not surprising. I had the same passion when I founded my own company, and it's just, it's who I am. And it meets a lot of people, probably get tired of hearing me, but anyway, doesn't matter. And it's not, I must say, creating a museum is not a one-woman show because it does a lot of work. And in the 10 years, and some of the people that are here today have been on the board, on, off the board. Ellen, my assistant, is the one who sat with me in the back room of my house to help us get the doors open and for the first little cottage. And so there's just so many people, and then you probably know, I'm like blessed with family. They're very creative and I'm very lucky. So Tiffany is the executive director, and Renee is on the board, and Catherine, the granddaughter, now I'm the, I'm the grandmother of Catherine, I don't have an identity anymore, but it's okay. Yeah, it's great. And my son's been very involved, so it's really, it's really been very fun. And I'm still not tired of it, although there are days when I think, hmm, if you have a company and you're going, okay, I'm tired of this, you can sell it. I can't sell the museum. Oh, my gosh. So as I mentioned before, the Arduouses have been so supportive of us, and it's been great. That's not forever, but we'll have to do some major fundraising, and hopefully the city will help us with all of that. And, and then this recognition just gives Bruce Cook more things to write about, so I'm sure it'll be in the daily pile at least once. So anyway, I just hope we all pay it forward. That's what I've done, and, and it comes back many times. So I thank you again for the nice honor. It's great, and thank you for everyone for being here. So nice.
So before we take a picture, Councilmember Avery wanted to make sure he made a couple remarks.
Yeah, I'm, you know, to really understand Newport Beach, like so many things, you need to understand its history. And so what Shirley's done there on the island and her group, it's very entertaining when you're there in terms of just going through the exhibits, but it's also a lesson in where Newport Beach is, came from and how it got there, and sort of the people in the town that drove the city to where it is today. And, you know, the city's about renewal, but it's important to keep an eye on the history because that's how you get to the next place because you understand what, what the culture is and the dynamic of the people that are always pushing forward to improve the city from the very beginning when it was East Balboa down there on the peninsula to today. And there's nobody else is doing it. This is it. I mean, I know there's some experts in town, and, but without you, Shirley, and your, you know, cadre of folks that have pushed this, it just, we wouldn't have this information, this history, this gathering spot. And I'm sure you get calls every day with people that have something to add to, to the museum, a lot of stuff. You probably go, oh, that's not quite right, but there's always some nuggets in that. And there needs to be a place where people can, you know, if they've got historical artifacts and papers, a place for them to go. So thank you so much for, for creating it, making it happen, keeping it alive. It's not easy, I'm sure, and it's, it's a wonderful gift to our community. Thanks so much.
Awesome. Thank you, Shirley. So we're going to stand right over there.
Okay, one, two, three. Can you take one more? One, two, three. Dennis wants to.
On three, one, two, three, and one more, one, two, and three. We got it.
Yeah. Shirley.
So we're just, we're going to go out of order for Dennis because
Thank you.
this is what we do. But go ahead, we'll open brief public comment.
Thank you, public comments here. So I just wanted to add to the record, you know, you guys do a lot, and thank you for everything you do to keep the city the best it can be. One of the great things that I think you get to participate in, and one of the things we benefit from are what I call legacy projects. And what Shirley started with the Balboa Island Museum is that, it's a legacy project. It is a, it's a home in Newport Beach that not only meets our requirements as residents, but also for our international visitors who come. And when they walk through, if you happen to spend a little time hanging out at the museum and watch what happens, especially during summertime when Marine Avenue and Balboa Island is so vibrant, you'll see people walk in and they are just amazed. They are amazed. They see the pictures of John Wayne, and they follow through the history, the sailing, the harbor, and whatever other specialty vignettes that we have going. And they just, it's just really wild, you know, Robin, to be able to sit there and watch what's happening. It's amazing. And it's all because Shirley created it. And as you know where we're at now, is we got to figure out a way to stay in that location. So we'll look forward to some help with that as we move along. But what a great day, and it's an honor to be here to support our community member who's created a legacy facility for us in the Balboa Island Museum. Congratulations, Shirley Peppas.
Awesome. All right, so since I know all of you are here for Shirley, and you probably have dinner reservations at Royal Hen, I will just note, we are going to be talking about the League of Cities now. And so if you would not like to stick around for the League of Cities, you are not required to stick around. You're excused. Thank you all for coming. Thank you, Shirley. It's always good to see the mayor of Balboa Island. All right.
Thank you.
See you, Jack. All right, we'll move next into study session item number three, the review of the city's membership in the League of California Cities. Haven't, I haven't asked for, I will have public comment after this item. So I haven't asked for a staff presentation on this. Connor, I know you're here. If you'd like to do, if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to, but it probably makes sense for me to just kind of start out by explaining why I've asked for this to be put on. So a couple of things. One, I asked for this to be put on as a study session item, not a voting item, because frankly, I don't know what I want to do with this, and that's sort of the point of working through on a study session item. The thing that has been bothering me are, have been, in particular, although some of the legislative positions that have been taken are counter to what we would like to see. Proposition positions being taken by the League of Cities has been grossly opposed to the positions that have been taken from the dais. And this year in particular, we're seeing two positions that have, I think, frankly offended me in terms of the way that they've taken it. The first one being the proposition for Proposition 1. So this, this body unanimously took an opposition position to Proposition 1 for many different reasons. One of the primary reasons, though, being the way that it's going to be undercutting local, local control and the way that we anticipate this, the money being used to come in and allow for state funding, additional state funding into our neighborhoods in ways that we would, we've, we've been strenuously opposed to and been begging for support and help on legislation addressing these needs. And in fact, Councilmember Climan wrote a very good op-ed on this that was, that appeared in the Newport Beach Independent. And it just strikes me as stunning, frankly, that the League of Cities would have taken a, a position supporting Proposition 1, given its effects on localities and neighborhoods. The other are a trio, so you've got the, it's the opposition to the Taxpayer Protection Act, and you've also got the support of ACA 13. And the, and it's, these are, these are, these are tough to stomach because I sit on the board for ACCOC. And so ACCOC, essentially, the original purpose of that was to be kind of a counterbalance or at least a, you know, a position where, you know, we could also take a, stand for Orange County up in Sacramento as a lobbyist organization. And there are questions, and I think it's a valid question of, should we be in both, given the amount of money being spent on both of them? But the, when I was up in Sacramento last year, the League of Cities presented a 30, gave a 30-minute presentation, 15 minutes of which was spent talking about ways that the league helps out cities. The last 15 minutes was spent telling us that their number one goal in 2024 was defeating the Taxpayer Protection Act. The number one goal of the League of Cities was going to be defeating the Taxpayer Protection Act. With everything going on in our state right now on public safety aspects, with everything going on with homelessness, with everything going on, period, from a quality of life standpoint, we were told that the number one goal was to defeat the Taxpayer Protection Act. And anyone who looks at the Taxpayer Protection Act would understand that, that yes, you can have a disagreement on that one, but it's not even close to what the number one goal of a lobbying organization should be on behalf of cities. But the statements coming out about the Taxpayer Protection Act from the League of Cities has been grossly misconstruing it and has done so in an extraordinarily and highly partisan way, and has sent out letters to people who have supported the Taxpayer Protection Act, asking them to withdraw the support in ways that seem certainly like political bullying. And this unfortunately has been going on since I've been on city council, when this body took a position supporting the gas tax repeal. The League of Cities took a position in strong support of it and praised its passage. There are not very many bonds that I'm aware of that the League of Cities has taken an opposition position to, whereas this city council has taken an opposition to pretty much every single one. My concern is that the League of Cities has been taking political positions that are exact opposite of the ones that this body repeatedly takes on behalf of our residents. And so I, it bothers me to no end to see our money being spent on an organization that is doing things like that. And again, especially Prop 1 and ACA 13 and the Taxpayer Protection Act coming up this year. That said, I understand there are a lot of positives that come from the League of Cities, especially when it comes to the discussions, especially when it comes to staff. So I'd asked our city manager and city attorney just kind of briefly explain some of the positives that had come from them. And again, this is why it's a study session item, because I don't know what I want to do with this, but I'm, I'm just beyond frustrated with the number of times this, this city council has taken a position that we are very strong on and only to find that our, that the body that's supposed to be advocating for us has done the opposite. So that's the political side, and, and of course, it's massive public policy implications. But from a practical standpoint, Grace, I'm kind of, I'd love to have you just chime in and talk about the positives.
Sure, thank you. Certainly, the, the league has, the other, I think, main tenet of theirs is to provide education and collaboration across, across the state with the various cities, and they certainly have over 476, 76 cities out of like 480, you know, so almost all the cities in the, you know, in the, in the association, which makes it very strong for us from our, from our side, particularly in terms of education. For example, with our fire department, we have had our fire chief take on leadership roles, and it is the main vehicle upon which to collaborate with other fire departments across the entire state. So that, that's the main forum to be able to do that and have that impact and influence. The city clerk has also taken on leadership roles within the city clerk's area. We have, they have various conferences for specific areas, whether it's the city managers' group, the public works group, planning area. So I think collaborating with them, getting to know other fellow city managers across the state, it's been helpful. They have a coastal cities group together, so it's been helpful in terms of, you know, joining together on issues of, of commonality there. And then I, I'd like to actually turn it over to Aaron on the city attorney's side because I think there is a big resource that has helped when it's gone into litigation or legislation on that side.
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Grace said, as far as advocacy goes, I previously served on the Legal Advocacy Committee. I think it was a great experience. It's a two-year commitment, and they basically analyze requests for amicus briefs and how they can support cities in litigation. I think that's, that's one key piece. I think another one is really on the education side. They do a good job of keeping up to date on the Brown Act, the Political Reform Act, Public Records Act, and they put out publications every year that educate people regarding those. And I just, as far as collaboration goes, it's a good opportunity to meet with all the city attorneys at the various conferences, which are also educational. But I think as a city of our size, it's good to be able to collaborate with other, other cities that are facing similar issues. So I think those are kind of the key ways that the city attorney's office here in Newport Beach kind of works with the league, but I understand your other concerns.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Before we go out, does anyone, I'm, and I should probably make sure that our representative, Robin Grant, I, do you want to say anything before we go out to? Yeah. We want to go, we'll go out to public comment. So because this is specific to League of Cities, we won't turn the, the number on for Connor. So anyway, Connor, I'm sorry, the timer on for Connor. So Connor, go right ahead.
Apologies. Thank you, and good afternoon, Mayor O'Neill and honorable councilmembers. I'm Connor Medina, the Regional Public Affairs Manager for the Orange County Division of the League of California Cities, or CalCities, and proud Newport Beach resident of almost six years. I'm joined by Orange County Division President Marshall Goodman, Mayor of La Palma, and Division Past President John Taylor, Councilmember for the City of San Juan Capistrano. I want to highlight just briefly some key points illustrated in a membership value report delivered to the council electronically last week. The report details the ROI of your membership based on the funding formulas and allocations that CalCities was the lead stakeholder in securing for its members, with your investment providing an average return of $449 for each dollar invested over the past six fiscal years. So a membership is an investment that has delivered for the city and will keep on doing so in a budget deficit year. The report also details the many ways Newport Beach takes advantage of its membership. So as the city manager mentioned, city clerk Brown is an officer for the city clerk's department. She was elected by her peers, city clerks statewide, to be second vice president on that leadership track. We had the pleasure of featuring city manager Lee Young at our city managers' conference on a panel earlier this month, where she highlighted the city's profile by discussing the different ways that the city is cultivating constructive engagement among citizens and effective, effective resident engagement and citizenship. And Councilmember Grant and Fire Battalion Chief Brian McDonough serve as voices for the city on our community services and revenue and taxation policy committees respectively. Sober living policy is under the purview of the community services committee, so Councilmember Grant's voice will be vital in rallying cities around the four sponsored bills CalCities has introduced on this issue and providing additional oversight over these facilities. Her voice will be monumental for that effort. Additionally, the report outlines many sections of your legislative platform where we do have that alignment with our advocacy efforts, both legislatively and legally. And I understand, I hear you, Mayor, loud and clear on the issues where there are differences, and there's going to be. We represent 476 cities that are extremely diverse in their economic geographic profiles. It makes us stronger to have, as an organization, to have Newport Beach at the table with us. We are both stronger together and more effective together than we are operating apart. And in addition to Councilmember Grant's service on a policy committee where she, she was elected to the Division Board of Directors by the cities in the Fifth Supervisory District, so that kind of engagement also allows the city's voice to be heard. And I encourage all in the council who are not terming off this year to apply to be on the statewide board. We have at-large appointments opening up in April. I will gladly help you through that process and help to the best of my ability if you want to apply for the board or for a policy committee so that the city's voice can be more directly heard in these conversations when the board takes up issues like this. I want Orange County to have as many voices at the table as possible. We have five from our region currently on that board. I want to maintain and grow that presence together with you. I'm available throughout the meeting if you have any questions, and I just appreciate the opportunity to have the study session and for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? Yeah. Mayor, Mayor Goodman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor O'Neill. Oops, again. Marshall Goodman, Mayor of the City of La Palma, also serving as the Division President this year. I just wanted to reinforce one point that Connor made is, you know, having Orange County cities be at the table, and that being either on policy committees or on the board, the statewide board. Of course, we have the Division Board representation from Robin, but I would love to see more and, and of course, Councilmember Taylor from San Juan Capistrano, but more, you know, representing the, the southern part of the county would be nice. So I would love to have more of you in cities in, in South Orange County come and represent on our division board as well as the state board. When we have a seat at the table, we're able to convey the different perspectives. They're heard, and of course, as mentioned, we have 476 cities as members, so the final decision may be a little different than what any individual county or cities may prefer, but at least we have a seat at the table. We're having a discussion. We hear the inside baseball. So that's what I just wanted to come up and reinforce. An immediate past president, Councilmember Taylor is here too in support. I'm certain he supports my sentiment as we basically worked together last year and continue to work together this year. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll bring it back up. Councilmember Grant?
Well, first I wanted to thank both Marshall and John and, and you as well, Connor, for coming today and listening to our concerns because I do think that Mayor O'Neill is raising a significant concern that's shared by many, if not all of us here at the dais. And I've been able to firsthand see the progress of the kinds of concerns that the mayor has suggested occur in the short time that I've been on, at the elected District 5 representative and also the council's representative to CalCities. But I've also seen the good work that CalCities has done as well, and I think that there's a balance there. And I understand from our staff and talking, you know, really in depth with staff about the really important needs of our city that are fulfilled by CalCities, so, you know, there is a balance there. I'm encouraged because you are hearing what we're saying, and I do think that you have the best idea, which is more of us in this, here, seated here, and also other like-minded cities need to be encouraged to get actively involved because that is the way that we can make changes, is by having a seat at the table, and more, the more seats, the better. So I would suggest that we continue this dialogue. It's unfortunate, that's something that's so important to us, the Prop 1 matter, it is unfortunate that that is what brought this to a head, and we're, you know, we're going to see some resolution of that eventually, you know, in the next, in coming days. But it is unfortunate that we are so on the, you know, 180 degrees apart on that because it's really a sore topic for us. And I, again, I'm encouraged by the pending legislation and the really increase in conversations that are happening in Sacramento about ways to dilute the effect of Prop 1, especially the effect of the pieces of it that really don't work for us here in the city. We've been suffering with an overconcentration of unregulated sober living and other types of group homes for a very long time, so it's a very important issue for our city. And moving forward, if, and when, you know, given that we are going to continue with CalCities, it will be very critical that we push the agenda of those particular pieces of legislation that bring relief to the cities that are, you know, encountering this difficulty. So again, I appreciate your input and thank you for coming.
Councilmember Blom. Thank you, Mayor. So you had mentioned some great things that you guys bring, which is a seat at the table, but I have a hard time when that seat at the table is contrary to what we want from this dais. So it doesn't always bring the right, the right solution at that point. So when I look at you guys and you refer to yourself as a lobbying organization for us, but we have diametrically opposed ideas on so many platforms, I wonder, are we getting that four to one ratio of return that you're saying is coming out to the cities dollar for dollar? And so, you know, I don't think it's the dollar amount we're talking about. It's about the fundamental ideals and representing the strength of our citizens, which is the job we sit up here doing. And a lot of these pieces that you've taken a very strong piece on, a very strong action on, are something that are diametrically opposed to what our citizens want. And so for me, this is irresponsible for us to continue this membership because this goes against the will of Newport, and we're up here to represent the will of these people. And this chamber gets filled time and time again, dealing with this exact issue that you guys have took a very directed stance against. And so where are we supposed to go with something like this? Are we supposed to say, no, let's, let's put our faith in an organization that says it's more important it's more important to represent every city in California than us? I get it. You guys have to represent the large majority of your constituents, your people. Unfortunately, that's the job of us as well. We're up here to represent the large majority of our constituents. And if there's enough of the policies that you're opposing that our residents want, it makes it really difficult for us to continue. And so I can't support continuing with this organization. I just won't. I think we've taken a lot of very proactive steps to fight these pieces, and I respect our staff immensely. I'm very happy that we've brought some wonderful things in, and education is one. I really appreciate that. I like that we've had leadership roles up there. You know, we are 100% supportive of our public safety and whatever they want, but there is definitely a point right now where we're fighting these things with all of our teeth, and to be opposed by the League in Sacramento is insane, because we're spending lobbying dollars fighting our own fight, which means now we're spending lobbying dollars helping you fight against us. That puts us in a really difficult position. So we're not in the budget deficit you speak of. We run a fiscally responsible city. We have our own lobbying. We work really hard to protect the citizens. And so for me, this is just something that's almost a non-starter because of the positions that have been taken recently. So I'm not saying we can't come back to the table. I'm not saying that we can't find somewhere to get to eventually, but at this point, how could I support this? How could the citizens of Newport support this? And that's my job to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Avery.
You know, ever since I've been on council and I've termed out, it's just been a steady drumbeat of the city losing, all cities in California, losing local control, but particularly Newport Beach, and I think you understand why. You know, it's a very attractive city for businesses to start group homes, and we've seen time and time again, the state is unwilling or unable to really regulate those homes that, you know, we need to see, because it's a real challenge for us and for our residents. And we've had some very unfortunate incidents occur due to that lack of oversight. So at the same time, I really like what CalCities does. I mean, it's an important organization for sure, and for, not just for Newport Beach, but statewide, just helping cities be the best cities they can be with all the things that Aaron and Grace mentioned. Those are important things. And I'd hate, you know, to see us withdraw on this one issue, but at the same time, it's really difficult to see Prop One come along and, you know, from all, it looks like it's going to pass, I would think. And it's, it's not good. It's not good for us, and it's not good for the future. And I understand the reasons behind it, but we, we need to respond to our residents and defend our residents in this situation. So I'm just hoping we can figure this out and somehow, I don't know, unwind, work with CalCities to change some policy. Thank you.
Councilmember Kleiman.
Well, I guess at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I'll just echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I'm definitely not convinced that CalCities is representing the values of Newport Beach, but what's more troubling, however, is the active advocacy in opposition to our needs. The CalCities' mission is to expand and protect local control for cities through education and advocacy to enhance the quality of life for all Californians. But recent actions have been counter to local control and autonomy. We've talked a lot about Prop One. Your position to support is in direct conflict with your previous advocacy for $3 billion in funding to cities, not the state, as Prop One calls for, to address homelessness as well as efforts relating to sober living. I had inquired with Mr. Medina in the previous days for an explanation about the position on Prop One, and that explanation was that the organization chose to support the bill before the by right language was added, but that the board voted to support it anyway after it was added. And again, I'll just emphasize, by right allowance for the uses outlined in the proposed legislation is the absolute antithesis of local control and on an issue that much of this county and certainly the city is already deeply struggling with. Supporting now and hoping that the state is going to miraculously implement much-needed guardrails in the future is simply not a plan for success.
I have a question. So Grace, when we, what's our, is it a calendar year that we pay in as members?
It's an annual, and I actually, we received our invoice now, so I think it's due by the end of this month.
I'm actually legitimately asking that question. I actually didn't know the answer to that one. So we just, we literally just got our invoice, and it's due when?
I think at the end of this month, I want to say, or when the council decides, yeah, so it's.
So this is coming back? Okay. Well, that's going to be, that's interesting. All right, so maybe a couple things then. So one of the things, and obviously the Prop One, so first off, probably want to say this at least out loud, which is, I like our board in Orange County, and I appreciate you guys being here. I know you're advocating for us, and I appreciate you. Every time I read a quote, or every time I read something on a position that I think is frustrating to no end up here, it hasn't been one of you. So I just want to say again, I appreciate what you're doing, and I appreciate you being Prop One is a big deal to us. It's a really big deal to us. And having voters support it or not support it is entirely up to the voters. We've taken our position. We get it. We don't like paying money to an organization that's advocating for it, and that's a problem. It's also a problem on, like I said, on ACA-13, where this body, let me pull up the, this body in our, back in late September, brought it forward. Councilmember Wagon and I co-sponsored it, and it, and it, this body unanimously opposed ACA-13, and League of Cities is supporting it. Councilmember Grant and I supported ACA-1. My understanding is that the League of Cities, I'm not sure if it's taken a position on that one yet, but when we're talking about both of those, both of those are in reaction to, again, I mentioned the Taxpayer Protection Act, and Councilmember Wagon and I both signed on to an amicus brief in that, on that issue. And so when we were going through and reading the CalCities comments about the Taxpayer Protection Act that I had mentioned earlier, this is a direct quote on this League of Cities, California League of Cities website, quote, "This ballot measure is an anti-democratic power grab by greedy corporations and puts a radical minority in charge of the democratic process. It also jeopardizes a range of critical city services infrastructure that our residents have come to rely on and expect. We need more accountability for wealthy corporations, not less." That's not remotely close to what it is, but that's what our organization that's advocating for us is representing about something that Councilmember Wagon and I both put our names So I understand the good on this, but I think at this point, what I'd like to do is I'd like to see this actually come back as an action item. So instead of it coming back on a consent calendar, we should probably actually have a vote up or down on whether we want to continue to be part of the League of Cities. So if we're going to be doing that anyway, then I don't think we need to have a, we don't need to do any kind of straw vote today. I just think that, I know that this is usually on our consent calendar, or maybe it's not, maybe, no? Yeah, I think it's going to need to come back. So I guess the, I guess that's the question. I'd just like to see a show of hands. I don't need to see a show of hands yet, whether we're going to approve or not approve. I'd just like to see a show of hands on whether you'd like to actually see this year it come back on our, on our council meeting agenda, whether the next one or the one after, to decide whether to move forward, to continue our membership. So I'd like, and the reason I, and the reason I say that, and let me say this, because the reason I don't want to have an up or down hand right now is because I'd really like you to go back and express the concerns we're raising here. And if there is a really, and I'd like to have some kind of like good compelling reason to stay in, in response to the concerns we've raised, so that we can have that discussion at the dais when it comes back to us on the, for this, because maybe we stay in, maybe we don't. But I'd like to at least have expressed these concerns, and you've heard them, so that there can be a good response back to us to make the decision, do we want to move forward or not? Does that make sense, Connor? And I appreciate that. Anyway, why don't we do that, since it's a little bit out of the ordinary for us to actually bring this back for actual action? Why don't we just, why don't I just see a show of hands, whether you'd like this to come back for, for actual action on the next agenda item, on the, excuse me, on the next council meeting agenda? So go ahead and raise your hands if that's what you'd like to do.
That's unanimous, seven zero.
Okay. Appreciate you. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just add one more thing, if you're going to be preparing, if you could add Rena Reform to that. I know you, it's on the website, I know that's something that you're supposedly working towards, and I think we all up here would like to hear exactly what those efforts look like, and also looking backward towards what actually was done, if anything, with this last Rena process.
Awesome. Thank you for coming. I really, especially our elected representatives, I do appreciate you being here. I know how busy you all are. So thank you for being here, and hopefully you enjoyed Newport Beach. Buy a car on the way out. All right. Yeah, of course.
I failed to mention, I left business cards with your clerk that have my personal information on it, cellphone number, so please reach out. If you want to have any deeper conversation about anything, please do reach out. I'm available.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. All right, move into public comments. Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and on agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. Welcome, public comments. Yep, come on up, Paula.
I've been here many times, and, you know, listening, I'm glad I'm here tonight, though, because, boy, did I hear a lot of good stuff. All right, now, the statue in Newport is getting trashier and trashier. And, you know, it's just a dump down there. When I go to Edison, they have nice running water, and I always like going in the businesses that make you feel happy and welcome you. Newport, he's not even a hero. He killed himself because he was on marijuana. And he didn't save anybody. He really belongs in a graveyard, and it's a lie to the public, and it's a lie to people that come in. And I think we've got to make our city happy. And I always picture a bird bath or running water, something happy for the children, and it's not. So who gets happy looking at a statue? And what does it do for anybody? Nothing. Absolutely nothing. And God destroyed all of them. And I think it's a shame we even spend money on them. But the second thing that I want to bring up is the Balboa, and that is the Irvine Market. I talked to you, Mayor, and the Irvine Market is the only ones that can't put chairs and a table out there. Now Krokers, is it Krokers, across from the post office? Okay, they've got tables out there, but they shove them up against the benches. So they've got them there, and then there's a chair there and a chair there. So they have the walkway on the sidewalk. They can do the same thing at the Irvine Market. I go down there, I like to eat outside, and there's plenty of room on the sidewalk. So why does Krokers be able to do it and Irvine Market can't do it? So tomorrow morning, I would like you to give permission to have those chairs out there and tables, because that's a lovely place to enjoy what you're eating. Can I get an answer for that?
This is time for public comment. I had a not, not a question to answer, but go ahead. You still have about 20, 15 seconds.
But how can I find out if you're going to approve it without coming back? Because I keep coming back for everything, but I, really, it's, it's a business, and I think we should help our businesses. And if there's all tables, chairs out there for everybody, it's got to be okay for the Irvine Market.
All right.
And I will stay in.
Next. Yeah, next speaker, please.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I noticed the next item on the agenda is that you are going to go into a closed session to do something about, discuss something about public employment of our esteemed city manager and city attorney. The government code section cited in the agenda is actually a very broad one that could go from anything from appointment to dismissal, and I'm hoping what you're planning to do is in the middle, which is an employee evaluation. But I also suspect from when I've seen an employee evaluation in the past, that we will hear that the two employees are going to recuse themselves. And I've always wondered how one can conduct an employee evaluation if you don't even speak to the employee during the evaluation. Number two, if the city attorney is recusing himself, who is going to be there to advise you to make sure that you don't stray from items that should not be discussed in closed session, which in this case would include compensation? And then third, how you're going to do it in just five minutes each? Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, well, hello. How are all of you here tonight? My name is Dom Jones. I am your current State Assemblywoman candidate on your ballot right now, and I came here to talk to all of you this evening, to talk to Newport Beach, because I'm a longtime neighbor. I am the United Nations Government Affairs Ambassador for all of Orange County. I am a business owner. I've been a business owner of a gym in Huntington Beach, and I've lived there for 10 years. And I'm a resident here and a longtime neighbor. I've even met my dear Robin at some point. I think I can remember that. But I'm running, and I want to let all of Newport Beach and all of you on the city council here know that I really care very much about our community and about our coastal area. Here at Balboa Island, we enjoy a lot of tourism. We enjoy many people who come to really take joy in the great coastal coastline that we are. Orange County really is one of the top places in the country, in the nation, in the world. We get to honor it, we get to protect it, and we get to uplift it. I'm someone that believes that we get to work across party lines. It's important that no matter whether a person is Republican or Democrat or independent, that we realize that we're not born human, I mean, we're not born red or blue, but we are born human beings. I am a person of faith. I am motivated by my faith. I am a woman of faith. I am someone that is here because I've been called to be here and called to service. I seek to love everyone. I'm not afraid to say we need leaders who are willing to legislate with love and compassion, Mayor O'Neill. And I'm not afraid to say that I am here to really show that even those who might not look, right, like the apparent, what will be assumed to be the people who would lead an area. I have colorful rainbow hair. It's because I'm an entertainer. It's because I've been on CBS as The Amazing Race, and I love bringing people joy. It's because I'm a TV show host, and I should never be maligned for that in being my true, authentic self, which is something our youth get to be. We get to be balanced, we get to listen to one another. We've gotten way too far into our silos, way too far into our echo chambers, and we are not listening to one another. So I'm here with everyone here tonight who's sitting and listening to say this. I am someone who stands for unity, unity and reason. And I believe that in Newport Beach, why, I am the best option to be elected as the next State Assemblywoman.
Mayor, I'm sorry, you can't campaign from public comment, but you can, keep going.
Thank you for letting me say that, Mayor O'Neill. I'll finish this last point, because I believe economic prosperity is our goal, and me going to Sacramento, I know I'm in the position and the right space to bring us that prosperity across party lines. So thank you for giving me some time with you. Thank you for listening, and to everyone listening. listening tonight and to this, I just want to say that I care for you from my heart, from my soul, and I'm here to be a servant leader. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys, thank you.
All right. Next speaker, please. All right. Mr. Hart, take us into closed session.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss two matters of public employment as set forth on the agenda under item four A. The city manager, city attorney will accuse themselves from this item based on potential impact of personal finances. Thank you.
All right, let's see, we're going to come back at 5:15. We'll start back up at 5:15. Thanks. All right, welcome back to the February 27, 2024 City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, there is no closed session report, so we'll invite Dr. Ahmed Sobo to come up for the invocation, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Grant.
Oh God, we ask you to protect us among those whom you protected. We ask you to heal us among those whom you healed. We ask you to bless us among those whom you've blessed. We ask you to guide us, to do the right thing, to say the right thing, and to make the right decisions. Oh God, we ask you to bless this council, the wisdom, the courage, and the ability to make the right decisions on behalf of the citizens of this beautiful city. On behalf of my community, I'd like to extend the warmest greeting. As the month of Ramadan is approaching us, it reminds us that this is the month we think of others, and we appreciate the blessings that we have. At this time, with things going around the world, we pray for safety, peace, for all humans on this beautiful planet. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you very much. Now is the time for city council announcements and oral reports from city council and committee activities. Councilmember Kleiman.
No report.
Councilmember Blom.
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Avery.
No report.
Councilmember Wagon.
I do know.
Well, lots to report, but I am going to just say one thing, that it was quite a lovely afternoon today, being with the residents of Newport Beach to celebrate the groundbreaking of our soon-to-be civic hall on the Central Library campus, and I appreciate all the work of staff to bring that event to fruition. It was very lovely and a nice day to celebrate with our city.
Thank you very much. Mayor Proton Stapleton.
I would just say, I want to thank Public Works Director Dave Webb, Lieutenant Corey Wolick, and Parks Director Sean Levin. I hosted my first District One roundtable last week, and I had all the presidents of all the HOAs in District One attend, and it was a terrific discussion about all projects and everything going on in District One. And I will finish my comments with looking forward to seeing almost all of you Thursday night, when we get to celebrate our mayor at the annual mayor's dinner, so, hosted by Speak Up Newport.
I will be there. So, I was able to speak briefly, giving kind of a state of the city to the Newport Harbor Exchange Club this past two weeks ago, and we'll actually be doing the same thing next week for the Newport Beach Chamber, which I'm excited about. All right, now we move into matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda, which is a non-discussion item. I've asked to be placed, consider forming a city council ad hoc committee to negotiate the terms of the Visit Newport Beach contract for destination marketing services. I see a question from Councilmember Kleiman.
Yeah, my question is, would you consider amending the committee's responsibility to creation of a detailed scope of work for the city's tourism contract?
Yes, I think, yes, that would, I would expect that to be part of it, so. All right, with that, we'll go ahead, and if you're in favor, please raise your hand.
Just a point of clarification, was that in addition to what's on here, or was that an amendment?
I think it would be embedded within the scope, so, or within, when it, so, since this is an A1 item, it will come back at our next council meeting with an actual creation of the ad hoc, at which point you can see what the scope would be, and if you wanted to add or subtract to it, it would be that time for it. But I would expect what Councilmember Kleiman had mentioned to be within the scope of that.
I think it's great, I just didn't want to make sure everything was encompassed.
Yep, no problem. All right, so if you're in favor of considering the formation of it, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, seven zero.
Okay. Now, next item, Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through fourteen. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from this consent calendar for separate action.
All right, on the public comment, excuse me, on the consent calendar, Councilmember Kleiman.
Nothing to pull.
Councilmember Blom.
Need to pull item eight, please.
Item eight. Councilmember Avery.
I have none.
Councilmember Wagon.
I have none.
Councilmember Grant.
None.
Mayor Proton Stapleton.
None.
I have none. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move, I move the consent calendar, except for item number eight, which has been pulled by Councilmember Blom, and noting the amendments to item number one, the minutes. So move.
I have a second. Second by Councilmember Blom. With item number eight being pulled, we'll go out to members of the public for consent calendar, public comment.
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I would like to call your attention to item number thirteen, which is the report of last Thursday's Planning Commission meeting, and in particular, I would like to call your attention to my written comments on their action on what was their item two at that meeting. It involved a long series of bureaucratic errors by the city of Newport Beach that have led to considerable travail for a disabled person in Santa Ana Heights, who wanted to continue their right that they had under the county to keep a small number of chickens on their residential property, as is allowed in nearly every other city around us, in fact, every neighboring city. It involves Ms. Mary Alice Campbell, who is sitting here before us, and you have an opportunity, which I wanted to tell you about, to correct this error. First, she was incorrectly told, I believe, incorrectly, that her right to keep chickens on her property and other animals weighing 300 pounds or less had expired a year after the city annexed Santa Ana Heights. I do not believe that was correct. She was told, though, that she could get an exception by asking for something called a reasonable accommodation. She got that in a hearing, which was probably incorrectly closed to the public without notice, but she did get permission to continue keeping three chickens. She was hoping she could keep more than that, and she was told if she paid $2,116, she could appeal the hearing officer's decision of a reasonable accommodation. The code and the original ordinance creating reasonable accommodations in Newport Beach is very clear that the hearing officer's appeal, if it is filed, goes to and is heard by you, the city council, nobody else, and in fact, in the original ordinance, the only finding, that the city council even itself was limited to the question of whether the hearing officer based their decision on substantial evidence, and if you wanted, you could remand it to him with additional evidence. However, her appeal was misdirected to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission took it on themselves not only to not allow more than three chickens, but actually to rescind and prevent her from having any on their mistaken belief that the code in Newport Beach no longer allowed that. And now, Ms. Campbell has been told that she needs to pay another $2,116 to get her original appeal of the probably unnecessary reasonable accommodation from the hearing officer to you, the correct body to hear it. I would suggest either that you allow her appeal to go to you without paying the fee, or better even, perhaps, you just allow her to withdraw her appeal and stick with the three chickens and refund her original money. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Mary Alice Campbell. I've lived in my home since 86. When I first bought, there was a goose across the street and horses three doors down, and I've always had birds, and the city said I couldn't have my chickens anymore, although they're allowing more, allowing them across the street and in other parts of Santa Ana Heights. The dog kennels were all, they moved the city dog kennel there. Anyway, my doctors from City of Hope and Hoag and UCI, six doctors have written 10 letters about what they do for me and the medical necessity of these animals. The city at first asked me to have three as a reasonable accommodation, and I wanted 10, I've gone down to three, I will not increase over three, I would have to move because I've lived there so long and I'm single, I'd have to pay three quarters of an million dollars in capital gains and move out of the county, and I'd be away from my medical care and transferring palliative care is extremely impossible, according to my doctors. So it could be really awful for me to have to move to keep what my doctors recommend. I'm just asking that there be away without paying another $2,100 to go before a committee who said that they don't know anything about reasonable accommodation, they don't know anything about how many chickens is reasonable, and I paid $2,100 to go to a place that says they don't know, you know? So anyway, the city first asked for three hands, I only have three, I want to go with what the arbitrator said was reasonable, and not have to pay another $2,100 within 14 days when I live on only social security and half of that goes to property tax. So anyway, I want you to either, what's the word for reviewing, recall for review, without charging me another $2,100 for you to have a chance to look at what the doctors tell me I need and what the city originally said is reasonable and I'm compliant with, and so that's what I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other speakers on consent calendar? Erin, when is, when is her appeal up? When are the, when's the time?
Days from last Thursday.
The March 8th or 9th, is that?
Okay. I suspect that some, thank you so much for coming, I suspect that some of us will certainly be looking into what the, what the ruling was from, from the Planning Commission and making a decision on whether to do a call for review.
Also looking to the ruling by the man who decides-
Yes, ma'am.
... reasonable accommodation, that the California disability rights people say you, all cities have those, and that three was reason, originally said three was reasonable. That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah.
The planning department said they don't know anything about what's reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you, ma'am, we'll make sure we talk with our city attorney on that one. Thank you. All right, we'll bring it back up on the consent calendar item. We have a motion, and we have a second, let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items three and four. Ordinance 2024-4, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach approving the termination of development agreement 2008-5, zoning implementation and public benefit agreement between the City of Newport Beach and Silver Living by the Sea, and ordinance 2024-5, adding chapter 10.75, prohibition of the sale and distribution of kratom to title 10, offenses and nuisances of the Newport Beach Municipal Code, of council members Avery and Blom. If you can please vote.
It's not popping up.
It's not, okay. Three thumbs up.
Yep.
Motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
All right. We'll move into the item that's been removed from the consent calendar item, number eight. Councilmember Blom, do you need a staff report?
No, no, I don't, thank you. And I want to thank staff, first of all, I know there was a lot of work, and I, sorry, I didn't get in front of this one. I don't typically like to oppose items like this, but as I look at kind of this area in general, and what was brought to the full council previously, which was the land portion of what we're looking at in Balboa Yacht Base, and then we had gone out for bid, that I believe is currently still out, I feel like it would be in our best interest to hold off on going into a design review and spending the just shy of $800,000 until we finish up that initial part where we have an approved piece coming back. And so I'm going to be voting no on this item strictly because of that, not that I don't think it's a reasonable piece, I'm very familiar with the contractor, I think they do an amazing job. I'm sorry we've made it this far, I'm not saying we can't use them in the future, but I think as we look at areas of the city, large expenditures, we should look at it as a holistic piece, especially if we're looking at the land and Marina, because they're both so interconnected, so, but that is my thoughts on that item, so. I think we can be happy to move forward. Let's hear some other comments.
So, since we're, since we're talking about, since we're talking about a RFP out on this one, it's not really appropriate to continue it out, so it'd be just essentially a rejection if we wanted to do that instead of an acceptance. Erin?
Yeah, that sounds appropriate.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood. Councilmember Wagon?
Yeah, I guess I'd just want to hear from staff to see if that is a, you know, a good, good idea to do. I appreciate Councilmember Blom's, you know, thoughts here, I'm kind of intrigued, I'd probably just want to know a little bit more, since we've already gone out, and it seemed like the two bidders were pretty close, but do we think they would think the same as Councilmember Blom, or, you know, what would, kind of just get a little bit more intel on this, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember, Dave Webb, your Public Works Director. I don't think you would have heard if you want to explore this, this is in our harbor master plan, the docks have been prepared to refurbish and replace for some time, but they could go a little longer, they are long in the tooth, we are having some issues in maintenance on them, but if you're talking about a brief pause, will you look at your other options there? That's fine, I would just caution, not too long, it's about a three-year process to design and go all the way through the Coast Commission and get them constructed, so, we're fine where council wants to go at this point.
And how far along are we on the land side of stuff to kind of intertwine that, would that overlap, or would that kind of work good, based on delaying just a little bit?
I don't have that information, because I-
Yeah, and I can speak to that, so that, the RFP process has closed, we have a couple proposals that are being evaluated now, so I don't think it's very long.
Okay, I'd be in favor of Councilmember Blom's.
Any other, before I go to public comment, any other thing, anything, excuse me, any other comments up here? Nope. All right, on item number eight, do I have any public comment? Bring it back up here. Councilmember Blom, you want to make a motion to reject?
Make a motion to reject this item.
I'll second.
All right, second by Councilmember Wagon. Any other comments? Nope, persuaded me to. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Thank you. Okay, the motion carries unanimously, seven zero.
Thank you very much. All right, that completes us for the consent calendar item, so, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is, wow, so sorry about that. Get a sign right there. My name is Chris Benziner, I believe you all recognize me from previous meetings. I'm here to talk about the mooring situation again, we've, you know, you guys are tasked, the Harbor Commission, to come up with an appraisal on the mooring rate, fair market rate deal, and anyways, I've been gathering a group of Newport Beach residents, we're growing at a rate of 18 people per week, we're raising $1,000 a day on average, and I just wanted to visualize some of the numbers that we're working with right now, just so you guys can get a grasp of- just so you guys can get a grasp of, you know, what we're talking about on these rate increases. So what I have here are some props. So what we have here is a mooring. This is a 40-foot mooring space, and then this right here represents a private dock. I've got a couple contributors in my group that own private docks, and then they also are the permit holder for the mooring adjacent, you know, that actually fits like this. So we've got a mooring. A guy's got a 25-foot powerboat on a 40-foot mooring. He's got a 25-foot powerboat on his dock and another 25-foot powerboat on his dock. His concern is that he is paying $11 right here for this situation. That's 50 linear feet, the 25 and the 25 together, right? And then he's got his 25-foot powerboat right here. He's paying, I believe it's $138 a month. The proposed rate that the Harbor Commission has so far come up with would bring this number to $480, right? Just so you can visualize that, the difference, it's 400%. It's a lot of money. When you scale this up to a 60-foot mooring, they're going from like, let's say roughly $1,400 a year to $14,000 a year. It's a lot of money, all while we're keeping this rate at $11 a month, $138 a month right now, and going to $480 a month, all while keeping this the same, right? It just doesn't look right. All we want is fairness in the harbor, to pay the same rates throughout the harbor for the same use, since it's the same submerged tide land. They actually are touching each other, right? Just so we can all visualize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, and you can use that microphone over there.
Good evening. My name is Bill Powers, a resident of Newport Beach for 45 years and also a mooring holder. And I'd like to just, that was an interesting, interesting exhibit, I'm glad I just saw it, but my concern really comes down to the work that the Harbor Commission, and it's been in earnest, and they've been transparent, and they've been as professional as you could be, but we're, the mooring holders are in firm disposition with them. We are not at all on the same page. What we've done is we're working, and you will see this as you see them, as this comes to your desk in the future, but the, and when you will vote on it, but there have been appraisals, and the appraisals were done in 2010, 2016, 2023 by the same company, essentially by the same person in the same company. What has happened in 2000, in the most recent appraisal, they've completely reversed their dialogue, I mean, their language. I won't have time to read it to you, but if you could look at on 2016, on page 17, how their equation of any type of relationship between a dock and a mooring does not exist. It's too difficult to compare the two. But yet the Harbor Commission would like to index the rate increases, index the rate increases to Balboa Yacht Basin. Now let's talk about the unintended consequences of that. Presently today, we just looked at an example, a 40-foot mooring, about $150 a month, it will go to $650 a month on their proposal. The Harbor Commission has then come back and said that is going to be, because there was an enormous emotional concern by over 200 mooring holders at the Harbor Commission meeting in the beginning of February. They backed off a bit and came back and said that we would stair-step it up. In other words, your first year, you'll pay $130 a month more, your second year, $130, et cetera, self-explanatory. What they failed to factor in was the historic rate increases at Balboa Yacht Basin. Now, what this equates to will be over a 1,000% increase. The person paying $1,100, excuse me, $115 a month today will be paying almost $1,000 per month. And these are retired, it's hard to, you look at boaters and you just think, oh, you're wealthy people, but many are not, and some of us will pay it to a point. But you could see these people with emotions. I would just ask you to please dig into this, the indexing idea of 20% per year. By the time the three years end up where the person thinks, well, now I've hit my $650, it's no longer $650, it's $1,100. Thank you, appreciate your time.
You bet. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Chris Bliss. I'm a 30-year mooring owner, and I wanted to, just out of, for my own curiosity, get an apples-to-apples comparison idea of what moorings the rest of California cost. So I called up all the major harbors and spoke with the harbor masters, and I got the following numbers. In Avalon, a 40-foot, a 40-foot mooring, incidentally, it's probably the most expensive moorings in the entire country, it's just my guess, but a 40-foot mooring recently sold for $275,000. The yearly fee for a 40-foot boat that they pay to the city is $523. That's what the mooring owners pay to the city. In Morro Bay, and incidentally, that's 24/7 dinghy dock included, in Morro Bay, yearly fee to the city is $1,320, 24/7 dinghy dock included. In San Diego, America's Cup Harbor, which is the most expensive mooring, place to keep a boat on a mooring in San Diego, the yearly fee for a 65-foot mooring is $1,884, dinghy dock included. In Monterey Bay, all mooring sizes, the yearly fee is $1,000 a year, and a dinghy dock is $600 on top of that, so it's $1,600. I talked to some marinas in San Francisco Bay, and there really are no mooring fields in San Francisco. They have a few, like, guest moorings, but they're not, nothing comparable to what we have here in Newport. Anyway, the conclusion that I came to is the average fee for moorings in all of California for a 40-foot boat with a dinghy dock is $1,332. And we've been paying way, way more than that for many, many years, and I think it would be fair to give us a rate decrease. I mean, we've been overpaying all these years. And one other thing I just wanted to point out, I don't know if you remember this article in the Register from 2016, where Councilman Duffield likened the city ramping up fees from its moorings in recent years with being a slumlord, and until the amenities for moorings improve, the rate isn't fair. This is what Councilman Duffield said. You're looking at a product that is like a slum apartment. And between now and when that article came out, 2016, there haven't been any improvements for the moorings of any kind, so I think that raising the rates, these astronomical rate increases are just very unfair. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Barbara Griffith, and I'm a Newport resident. I want to thank you for serving our city. I haven't really been too involved in things other than I sometimes go to your events at people's houses for fundraising, but my husband and myself are mooring holders. My brother has owned this mooring for a lot of years. So I kind of got involved when this increase of mooring fees came about, and I want to just add the wonderful people that work for the city and like Cassandra, who gives me a lot of information. I just really am saying that we're on the right step, you know? And I'm very proud of our city, and I'm very proud of all of you, too. But I am here to talk about discrimination, and that's what we feel and many people feel, whether you're a boat owner, I'm sorry, a mooring holder, or a resident without a boat. When this information comes to light, we find discrimination. I've talked with people at the yacht clubs, I've talked with people in restaurants, I've talked to people at the yoga studio, just gave them my side of it and what was going on, kind of what you've been hearing here, and they can't believe it either. So have you seen this? It's terrible, and this is what the media is doing to our beautiful city. I know, Robin, you saw it because I sent it to you the other day. It is from the log, okay? And it's two guys, and we're going to get them out of here. Says our new appraisal will result in a offshore mooring price hike with 100%, with 500%. And then the other guy says, "Just enough to push the middle class out." And that's really what I wonder, what's happening. I was on a meeting yesterday.
So I need you to stand in front of the mic, please.
I'm sorry. I was at a meeting yesterday, and somebody made the remark that since 1998, the city has been targeting the mooring holders. So I just wonder why that is? And is it because you just don't want affordable boating, you know, family values? Is the city going to go to Monte Carlo and just big yachts? So please, when the Netzer appraisal comes in, or what I'm concerned with, and I think a lot of us is concerned with, is that when you see this on your desk, the recommendation from the Harbor Commission to recommend this hike increase, it's going to go by your desk and it's going to get approved, just like you guys approved the other things so quickly. But please, pay attention because the Netzer approval, appraisal is flawed in a lot of ways. When I first got involved, I looked up Mr. Netzer. He is nowhere to be found. So.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Adam Lovrens. In this room, on February 14th, Harbor Commission Vice Chair Beer put up a graphic on the screen up there with bullet points. It outlined commission takeaways to that date from public comment relating to the 300 to over 500% proposed increase in offshore mooring rates. Indicated was that public comment has said that charging fair market value is not fair. That's not the way I've interpreted public comment. I've interpreted that the determination of what's fair by the Harbor Commission is extremely flawed. I've attended numerous meetings on this, and I don't see how these perspectives can be so completely different. Another Harbor Commission bullet point showed that members of the public had said that mooring rates should not be tied to slip rates. This blanket generalization, too, I find a bit off the mark. Public remarks have been made that if marina slip rates are to be used for comparison to offshore mooring rates, those doing so should fully understand the extreme differences between the two, and that the 24% to 34% valuation comparisons are far too high, particularly given that the appraisal report from December seems the basis for those conclusions. And as you've heard tonight, the very same appraiser has previously said the methods he used weren't workable. Vice Chair Beer to me seemed to be trying to create an impression with his bullet points that offshore mooring holders are receiving, have asked for, or hope to benefit from the gifting of the use of state lands. This is not the case. Another mischaracterization he made was that we have private exclusive use of these mooring spaces. Mr. Netzer associated a 40-foot mooring with 1,200 square feet, saying it's 10-foot to the buoy, so 60-foot long by 20-foot wide. The boats drift around that space. They don't fully occupy that space as a boat in a slip does. I regularly, when I'm down here, see people come through that mooring space on even big sailboats, trying to cut through the tight mooring field to get out without hitting anybody, people fishing, people kayaking, stand-up paddle boarding. So it's completely different than a slip. I stopped at Balboa Yacht Basin on the way over today. Their slips are protected on three sides from impacts from other craft. Moorings have no protection. It's just, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, and I, like has been said, I don't think they're even comparable in the way that's being attempted by the Harbor Commission, but 24, it's like we're being told, oh, look, Netzer said 34%. We're doing you a big favor by only screwing you at a 24% rate. That doesn't make any of us feel good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. You're planning on speaking. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Creston, and I'm a mooring holder. To what Chris said about, and I don't know what your experience is with boats or anything like that, but a boat that is on a mooring without a dinghy dock is inaccessible unless you have a shoreboat that's associated with the yacht club or a way to put your dinghy or whatever way you're going to get out to your boat, paddleboard, whatever, in the water. And that is the difference between a lot of the other mooring fields that he investigated and Newport Beach. There are no dinghy docks, or there are very few dinghy docks. Anyway, I'm speaking about the Netzer proposal because back in January, Mr. Netzer was here and stated that he had been in discussion with a person or persons in San Diego who advised him that the Port Authority had approved a substantial increase in rates for San Diego moorings, which have dinghy docks, and that this increase had also been approved by the State Lands Commission. Members of the Newport Mooring Association contacted the owner of the San Diego Mooring Company, the Port Authority, and the State Lands Commission, and found that this was not true. In fact, there have been no approvals at that point, anyway. The request had not been made public yet, and public input had not yet been requested. The State Lands Commission had received no request and had not even heard of the matter, and the San Diego Port Authority is not being asked to, quote, "approve" and quote, "new rates." Rather, they're being asked to amend the current restrictions in a lease with the mooring company. Modifying the restrictions in the lease would allow the mooring company to test the market and experiment with rate increases up to the requested amount. What may or may not be a rate increase and how the market responds over time is not a matter that any appraiser would ever consider at this time in rendering an opinion of values and rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Diana J. Davis. I'm a mooring holder, and I just don't want to lose my home.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay. Since that item's not on for tonight, we're going to move into motion for reconsideration. Madam Clerk?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, saying none, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.